The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
All right, I'd like to call the board meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Then I will read our mission statement. We educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world. Next is our open forum. And we, the board provides our community with two different opportunities during our meeting tonight to speak before the board. All speakers must fill out a form indicating their desire to speak. If you wish to speak during tonight's open forum, you may do so with respect to items that are posted on tonight's agenda or any other matter you wish to share with the board. Please know that Wisconsin's open meeting law prohibits the board from conducting business on matters brought during this open forum. The next opportunity is a public participation during the agenda items that the Board of Education will be voting on, as noted on the board's agenda. During this public participation time, consistent with state and federal laws, board members may engage in dialogue with the speakers. In order that all voices are heard, the board will suspend engagement until all speakers have had a chance to speak. Please keep your comments to five minutes. Prior to starting your comments, please provide your name and address. Lastly, demonstrations during public comments such as clapping or cheering in response to either public comments or statements made by board members are prohibited. I would also, well, we'll do the open forum first. So I have two people that are going to speak at our open forum today, and I lost the... And the first person is Orellana Batiste. And also, she has provided us with a copy of her comments. Okay. All right, so our usual timekeeper is not here tonight, so Melissa will help with keeping time.
Okay, thank you. My name is Orellena Batiste. I live at 3105 Sandia Drive, Green Bay, 54313. I have submitted a letter of complaint regarding the Title VI Indian Education Program and its, and how the district has handled that program. As the chair of the PAC, the Parent Activity Committee, I am representing those students in this district and those families here tonight to talk about some of the issues that we have concern with. I think one of our major issues is that, as you can see from number one, if you have your sheet, that we, as a committee, have held monthly meetings and were informed each month that there were approximately 1,360 students at the highest point who had a 506 form on file. That 506 form is a federal form that needs to be filled out by every single student. Their parent will fill that out. It gives information that they're either enrolled or a descendant. Those forms are then provided to the federal government, and then with those numbers, Green Bay receives money through a grant for each of those students. So as we were told at each of the meeting, we had 1,600 students. However, upon this last meeting, we were informed that there were only 790 forms that were completed and valid. Our concern rises from the past three years of activities that have been going on that we are aware of. Our PAC was actually elected last year, and we have been working diligently to try to make sure that all Native American students have a successful time here at this district. We know that we are a group, and as many of you know from your data information, that we are a group that has a high achievement gap and also has a high dropout rate and is not graduating on par with other students in the district. So we feel that this district at this point, by allowing this program to not be compliant and not to get those forms in, and then once again, not sharing that information with us as a PAC, even though we are in advisory role, we have advised, we have given suggestions, however, we have not been listened to, and we are concerned with those facts. If you look at the budget, and that's something you guys will be able to do, is look at the budget and what the money was obviously given through that grant funding, we will now only be receiving probably less than half of what we had three years ago. Three years ago, we were at 1,469 students. That was reported to the PAC, and I'm not sure how in three years you lose roughly over 600 students in the district. We do understand there is graduation. We understand that there are transfers. However, to lose that many students, you're looking at well over $100,000 this district is now out of. I read the superintendent's new newsletter that she just sent out, and it's talking about cuts being in special ed and cuts being in the socially-emotional issues, social work and stuff like that. So that's where many of our students also fall, as this is a district that's disproportionate in its special ed classification with Native American students. So we just are concerned that, once again, our students are not being taken care of by this district. Our students are falling behind. Our students are not graduating. Our students, when you look at third grade testing, we were fortunate enough to be able to work with some of the staff here in the district, and they were able to share some of that public information with us and put it in a format that was understandable for us to show that our students are not completing the benchmarks that need to be met in third grade, in eighth grade, graduating, all of those things. If you look at number two, you can see that the budget has also consisted of money being returned to the federal government. How does a program which is supposed to supply benefits for Native American students in a district where every penny counts, because I know there's other cuts coming this year, how do you send money back? The only reason money was not sent back last year is because we, as a committee, got involved, and we pushed and pushed for money to get spent out. This year, it's up in the air because there was not a staff person that was hired, so the money's up in the air. We've already moved the max amount of 10% that can be moved over. So once again, there's a question, because I have not personally received a form to move any more money into any other position. So if that doesn't happen, because it has to be approved by the BIE, then that money will be lost by this district as well. So those are our basic concerns as parents of students within this district, that you need to start looking at this program. We would hope that you evaluate the program and look at the budget and look at what this program is doing. You have gone from seven-plus staff members to next year, hopefully, we are hoping you'll be able to staff three. And even that, how do you serve 790 students with three staff members for the entire district?
Is that your?
That's her.
Oh, that's her. I thought it was you.
I was trying to make sure I was on time, too.
All right. Yeah, I will have Vicki look into your concerns and get a report back to the board.
And we have gone, we have gone to the director. We have gone above the director of this program. We have gone to Vicki. So we, that is why we are here, because as a district, you guys are now losing out on well over $150,000 in the last three years worth of funding to Native American students. And if we are cut out of special ed, and if we are cut out of those programs for socially-emotional students, because there's less funding there as well, then, I mean, it's just a shame on this community that, you know, we're not taking this program serious when there is that funding out there and available from the federal government to help this district with our native student population, especially when we have so many deficits for graduation, for achievement gap, for student success on WKCE, ACT, you know, our averages are very low.
All right, yeah, we'll, we'll look into it and get the information where we can't talk about. It's not on our agenda. You can ask a question, yes.
If I could ask some clarifying questions.
Yes.
You talked about the fact that you haven't been heard, and I just need to know who you've met with and had... So did you meet with Ms. Byer and Vicki Byer?
Yes. Toni Lardinos, and then, of course, Riva Shah. Riva Shah is in charge of the program. Toni Lardinos, Margaret Lardinos, and then Vicki Byer. We have met with them in regards to these, and they have been at our public meetings. So we have also sent this as an email to everybody, and it also includes the dates of all of our PAC meetings. And the grant actually is to be reviewed by the community tomorrow night. If nobody got an invite, that's supposed to be open to the community, and there is a review of the grant tomorrow night.
I did reach out for a meeting back in November, and you weren't able to make that. You got back to me in January, and you had to cancel that meeting.
Yes.
So we haven't had a chance to meet individually. I just wanted to clarify.
Yes, so she did, and I did put that, I did post that out to other members of the PAC that Vicki needed somebody to meet with. I have some personal issues that were going on that prohibited.
You were unable to schedule that, but she did reach, Ms. Byer did reach out to you and ask for a follow-up meeting so that she could learn more.
But we have addressed, we have been addressing, asking for some resolve on these issues since May of last year.
And then you've done that through the department itself. Is that accurate?
With the three people who were mentioned previously by me, yes. We have expressed interest, especially when you consider that there are open record laws, and those were also broken. So this, this, this whole shambles of what is going on with this program is very much in jeopardy of, it could have been sued. Now we're losing money. So I believe, you know, these are serious concerns that I think the district needs to look into, and I do understand, like, there's, and, you know, we have reached out, there have been a few things that have been resolved, but not everything, and that's why when the lie was told to us that we had 1,360 students with paperwork in, and then to be told this last month that, no, the numbers that we're counting are only going to be 790. Once again, how do you lose 400 students in the matter of three weeks between the last time we were told a number and this time when we were told the 790? That's the official number that's going to be used on the grant application for next year.
Can I ask, is that, that's based on the 506 forms?
Yes.
Would you, would you mind talking about 6B? I was looking at that on there. The solicitation, the recommendations, that, that whole process, because I'm really not clear on that.
So the program is, the Title VI program is required to collect these forms from each of the families. So every student who is either enrolled or a descendant of a tribe needs to fill one of these out to, for proof. We have encouraged this committee since, or this program since last year of May, that this needs to be a number-one top priority, especially since last year, there was a drop of 121 forms last year. So we kept suggesting there were community events that the staff could have came to. We understand it's out of regular school day hours, but since this is a program that works after school and so forth, there could have been accommodations made. So we encouraged them to come to community meetings out in Oneida where they could have gotten parental forms filled out. We encouraged them to go to the school meetings when there's open houses and back-to-school registration at the beginning of the year. We talked to them about possibly having, the parent committee was willing to go out to different schools and to go to those events for them and to hand out the forms to the students. We understand there's privacy laws, but we also suggested then that they have return address envelopes so that those forms, once we made sure the families filled them out correctly, that then they could put that in the form and could get sent into the office here. So there were different suggestions that we had made to the committee or to the program in order for them to make sure these forms were collected throughout the year. And that is why at each monthly meeting, we asked for them to be accountable to us and to let us know where they were at, especially seeing as we were once at 1,469 Native students in this district. So, I mean, as a district overall, to go to 790 in three years, I don't understand where those families went to, especially when...
So how were they distributed then this year, do you know?
I don't know how they were distributed. They didn't share that information. I know a few of the families went to, or a few of the staff went to some events. Monthly, they have a family night that if families come to those, they would check to see if families had a form on file. If not, they would ask them to fill that out. But that is, goes back to that number seven, where notification for our family night events were sometimes not sent out until one day prior to the event by a robocall or an email. And so how do families know and plan for this? You know, some of us are very active and have other items on our agenda and our calendars, so one-day notice is not enough. So families aren't attending those events.
My name is Tanya Geary. I'm also a parent for, that serves on this committee. I also want to say that I've been in this school district for almost two, three, three years now, and it was two years, I was here for two years in the school district before I knew there was a Title VI program that existed. And I'm active in my school district, I'm active in the community, and it took two years for me to find out that there wasn't even a program for Native American students.
Just a clarification, is this a form that needs to be filled out annually?
No, it is not. Once the form is filled out by a family, then that form is valid for them throughout their time here at Green Bay. So that goes into a file here at the district office. So once again, that's why we question why are we told there's 1,360 forms on file this year, and then the actual 790 that's going to be counted toward the grant this next year. So once again, that's, half of that money is gone for next year.
We have to figure out where that disconnect is, because it doesn't, it doesn't, it wouldn't be, make sense.
Yes, and we were informed by the district that... So we are informed by the district representatives that have been coming to our meeting, because there has to be a district representative at our PAC meetings, because we are to advise Title VI. So that is where we get our number of 1,360 at one point in November of this year. And then for, we didn't even know the actual 790. We had just heard rumors of it, so we finally said, what is the specific number? Because we also were not informed of when those forms had to be returned in, because we have been asking for specific information in regards to the grant, such as seeing it before it's submitted and information like that, especially when Curtis and I have to sign off on it. And as of this year, I am not signing any form that I do not see and get a copy of, because there were anomalies with that from last year that I want to make sure I rectify this year, so.
Has anyone offered you a reason why?
No. When we've asked questions, we get some answers and we get some clarifications, but not completely and not totally, and then we get, that's just where the numbers at, in which we don't understand why 400 students have been lost in this district.
What, if I could, what I would like to do is have Ms. Byer obviously follow up with this. I'd like, I think the board would be interested in a full report at the board table to really understand why these numbers, and you made some very important points that I would like to follow up on, concerns, very concerning comments that we need to make sure that we have answers for. And I want, I want to make sure, I truly believe that, that, and I agree 150%, that every student is deserving of every resource and opportunity that they are not only entitled to, but that we can provide, so know that. And so we'll start with that, and then we'll go back and figure out where, where this is, and I would expect the board would want a full report. Is that, would that work? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next, Kim Shanuck has a guest.
Hello. The reason that we are here is to share...
Oh, I do.
Kim Shanuck, 1219 Quail Ridge Drive, Oneida, Wisconsin. Thank you. We are here to share information with you about the adult education opportunities that we have been providing through partnerships in our schools. I would first like to introduce Diane Shilka in Mercedes Sanchez Minal to share with you about the programs.
Good evening. Oh, Diane Shilka, 1462 Navigator Way up here. So we have partnered with the school district to offer some GED...
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm thinking it's me, so I'm just...
We partnered with the school district to bring our GED, ELL, and Career Pathways Bridge programming into the school district at, at your site locations. Our CPB program is the one that we're really here to talk about this evening, and I thought it would probably be best to start off with explaining to you what Career Pathways is, just so you understand our programming a little bit better. So Career Pathways is a laddering model where we have smaller certificates embedded within larger certificates. So program classes are sequenced so that students, as they progress through their program, they obtain certificates as they're going through their pathway to achieve their technical diploma or associate degree. So as students, so for example, welding program, you take your first eight classes of the welding technical diploma program, you receive an Intro to MIG welding certificate. And at that point, you can job out. You can get employment as a entry-level welder, decent wage. You can, like I said, you can job out or you can continue on. You take your next set of approximately eight classes, you receive a welding certificate, too. At that point, you could job out, you can get a higher-level position in welding, making more money, or you can continue on all the way to technical diploma. When you complete your technical diploma, you're now coming away from the college with two certificates and a technical diploma program. So in a nutshell, that's Career Pathways, which our entire college, our programs are either, they have embedded certificates in all programs, or we're working towards that. So with that in mind, we have our own program, which is Career Pathways Bridge Programming. I'm going to let Mercedes talk about that.
So the Career Pathways Bridge program is a specific pathway to allow students who either identify as being an English language learner, someone possibly without a high school diploma, or someone who doesn't have the, the basic skills that are needed to start traditional programming. So this specific pathway allows students to start earning credits towards a full diploma without having to wait for whatever reason. So our students typically have families, full-time jobs, and many other items on their agenda as well. So our programs really are allowing an incredible opportunity to students and people in our community. So specifically with the Run Initiative with the Green Bay Schools, we've had two programs running at West High School. So Monday and Wednesday evenings, we've had a MIG welding certificate program, and those students have enjoyed being back in one of the schools and, and working. I believe they only have one more class to start before they complete their certificate. And then through the partnership, we've had students able to complete a nursing assistant certificate, eventually become CNAs. So it's been just a really incredible opportunity to provide parents of students in the Green Bay Area Public Schools and our community members an opportunity to be in our schools and to be able to work on furthering their education.
Thank you. And Dr. Rai is here with us because in an incredible act of generosity, he provided funding to partially scholarship all of the people enrolled in the nursing assistant course, which really made this opportunity both accessible and affordable for them. So we would just like to present you with this in recognition of that support in our first-ever classes held in our district beginning in January.
Thank you, and thank you to not only NWTC, but the school district. We enjoyed watching this partnership, using our public facilities, and being able to help out with the tuition to actually add to our significant labor shortage. So it was a win-win for the community, for us as an organization, and more importantly, for the students that went through it. So we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, the class? Yes, and it just, no, it, it is transformational. So I want to thank all of you. It is truly transformational. You see these individuals who finally are finding their way and their path and seeing that it's going to be a very bright future for them, because college is now attainable for them, and they're earning credits, and they're engaged. And you said students, and I think sometimes we think students, younger folks, but these are, as you said, these are parents, these are people who have been doing a lot of, maybe two or three jobs, and this will afford them maybe one. You know, so anyway, it's, it's a big step forward for a lot of families, and it is truly transformational. So I'm grateful to all of you, to NWTC and to Pervaya and Dr. Rai, so thank you so much. And Kim, for putting it all together.
All right, then I would also like to announce that members of the public can view the board agenda and handouts as well as minutes from past meetings by visiting the district website at www.gbaps.org. If you click on "Our District" and then "Board of Education," you'll see a link that takes you to a website, or a link called "Agendas and Minutes," and this will take you to a website called Neptune, where all the board agendas, minutes, and handouts from board meetings are housed. Next, we will move to the report of the Board of Canvassers, and I'll turn that over to Andrew.
Actually, I'm going, because Andrew is...
Oh, he's on it. All right.
Certification of the Board of Canvassers. We, the undersigned, certify that we are the members of the Board of Canvassers for the Green Bay Area Public School District. We certify that the attached tabular statement of votes cast in summary statement of the Board of Canvassers, canvassed and prepared by us, are correct and true as compiled from the Green Bay Area Public School District Deputy Clerk. We further determine and certify that the following persons received the greatest and the next-to-greatest number of votes for the respective office, for which each was a candidate on April 3, 2018. Office Green Bay Area Public School District Board Member Rhonda Sitnikow. Green Bay Area Public School District Board Member Andrew M. Becker. And Green Bay Area Public School District Board Member Edward Dorff. Signed by the Board of Canvassers, myself, Chris Teskey, and Kim White.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next is election of school district officers and secretary to the Board of Education. So I would entertain a motion for election of president.
I would nominate Dr. Brenda Warren for president.
Second?
You don't really need a second.
You don't need a second.
Oh, all right.
Take back my second.
I have a second here, so Neptune, if you want a second, so if you want to...
Oh, all right.
I bring back my second.
All right. Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Carried six-zero. Next, I'd entertain a nomination for election of vice president.
I would like to nominate Ed Dorff.
I will second that.
Sandy?
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Carried six-zero.
And then lastly, the election of secretary to the Board of Education.
I would like to nominate Sandy Heller. Second.
Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Carried six-zero. And then lastly, the election of secretary to the Board of Education.
I would like to nominate Sandy Heller. Second.
Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Carried six-zero.
Next, we have school board organization items to take care of. First is our work session co-chairs. Currently, we have Chris Wagner and Andrew Becker on organizational support, Katie Maloney and Ed Dorff on teaching and learning, and Rhonda Sitnikow, Laura McCoy, and then I have also been part of it, the monitoring reports. So at this point, I don't know if, if everyone's happy with where they are. If so, we'll just continue that, or is there anybody who wants to switch?
Did you mention...
We also have the, I just realized that. The, what's it called?
Climate Engagement Committee. Climate Engagement Committee.
Climate Engagement Committee. That's Katie Maloney, Ed Dorff, and Laura McCoy. It's not technically a work session, but it is a group that meets every month, and... Climate Engagement Committee. That's Katie Maloney, Ed Dorff, and Laura McCoy. It's not technically a work session, but it is a group that meets every month, and they're part of the, they would come under the teaching and learning as items come forward on our agenda.
I would like to stay on that one if I could.
As would I.
Same.
All right, well, at this point, we'll keep moving forward with that, with those current assignments as they stand. Next is our legislative liaison position, and that currently is Laura McCoy. And I know Laura has expressed an interest in continuing with that. Everyone's okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
CISA VII Liaison and representative to the annual convention. I don't know that we have an official person this year that's serving as that. Was it Mike?
Was, no, last year.
No, was it last year?
Probably attended the conference.
Oh, okay, all right. Here's, this position...
Typically, it's the newer board member.
Is it really?
It has been. It's not required that we attend that annual convention, and in fact, our district is not nearly as involved in decision-making at the CISA level, just because we don't depend on CISA for as much as what other districts do. We have our own, we're big enough that we have our own staff, so...
When is it?
It's May 9th at 6:30, and it's at the CISA VII Building, which is on Broadway, kind of almost into Pier, in Ashwabanon, close to the pier. So if you're interested in that, just let me know. And then the WASB Delegate and Alternate, that's for the annual conference in January, and we usually hold off on determining that until, when do we have to decide, by November?
November.
Yeah, so...
Chris was at last...
Chris did it last year, so...
And then I did it this last time.
Oh, yeah, because Chris was gone, right. So Laura did it this year. If you have an interest in that, let me know, but at this point, we'll just hold off until November for that. And then lastly is our Head Start representative, and Ed has been doing that for the last three years, right?
Yeah, which is, continue, yeah.
He would like to continue with that. If that's okay with everybody. And then we have the board structure and meetings. Sandy has provided us with the list of our school assignments for next year, and then also our Board of Education meeting calendar. And essentially, the changes in that calendar are the same as they were this year in terms of a switch for the winter break, a switch for Labor Day, a switch for spring break, Fourth of July. So just pay note, pay special attention to those particular times of the year because the board meetings are switched either to the first and second, or second and third Mondays of the month.
One request or suggestion, Chris isn't here, but he has Head Start on his list. I would just soon have it on my list since I've been with Head Start, and it kind of makes sense to keep it that way.
Yeah, which of course doesn't prevent any of us from visiting, so, but it adds the one that they would turn to for specific concerns.
For their purposes, it's consistent then with one contact person.
Is it possible, just to get it on the record, to explain to people what the president and the vice president do in regards to board leadership? What does that mean? Because people do ask that question.
There's specific policy that describes what we do. I don't, I can...
100 series?
Yeah, I can look it up quickly.
And that's on the website, right?
Essentially, the president, and in fact, starting now, I think the vice president and president will meet weekly with superintendent. She runs things past us in anticipation of agenda items coming. It's mostly that, political kinds of things, PR-type things, and then, you know, obviously no decisions get made at those meetings, and then we would determine, we also then determine board agenda, you know, in terms of both timing and how to bring forth things. Anybody on the board, as you all know, because we've done it this past year, can put things on the agenda, but our, the president is the one that kind of discusses timing and what makes sense in terms of that. President is usually the person, the first person in terms of representing the board in the public.
Policy is 141.2.
And that outlines the duties of each of the offices of the school board? Thanks, Sandy.
As the veteran of one meeting so far, my sense of, one of the critical things there is, in that meeting, setting that agenda, discussing the agenda, setting the agenda, you know, discussing the things that have come forward through discussions with people in the public, staff, other board members, and again, discussing how to incorporate those into the agenda and the timing on that. Also, we discussed timing and scheduling of board retreats and topics for board retreats. So to me, that was the, kind of the essence of that weekly meeting, kind of setting the stage for the meetings to come.
It functions very much like an executive committee to a board, you know, in terms of looking at the agenda, looking at where people are at and current reality, and how to continue to move forward with the different issues as they come forward. And just like the other committee meetings, there are agendas that are set, and then have those discussions, and try to make sure that we're moving toward the vision and mission of the district, obviously, and so, thanks, Maloney.
Yeah, and that's a good point. For all of you that are on the committees, when you have meetings, then it's, the role that you play on those committees is the same as the board, as the president plays with, the same role the president has with the meetings with the superintendent, in terms of, you know, looking at agenda items coming up, you know, kind of anticipating what questions there might be to give people a time to bring forth more information, talking about what agenda items you want in the future, those kinds of things. So it's the same, essentially the same kind of function. And then I would like to also say that I really think that it's important to meet within your committee with the district administrators that head them up. So for teaching and learning, that would be meeting with John and Vicky, which I know you meet with her monthly. But I'm not sure that organizational support has been meeting as regularly. I think it just would be, it's very helpful to meet the two board members that are on that committee, to meet with Jean and John, again, to anticipate questions that might come up as agenda items come forward, to kind of look, you know, off in the future to see what agenda items you would like to bring up, bring forward, those kinds of things. And I think that's very, it's helpful for the board to have that, because then, you know, we get the information, we're more likely to get the information we need at the meeting itself, but I think it's also very helpful for the administrators that are in charge of those areas to have a chance to run things by at least two board members to begin with in anticipation of, you know, questions that come up. And then the same with the monitoring reports also. And I know those, you know, it helps to have those meetings set up at a regular time so everybody can get it on their calendar, so it becomes part of what you do. Yes.
It is very much a two-way street. I think what often we find ourselves in looking for input from the board, wanting to make sure that we're moving in the direction of the board, obviously, that's why we work for, moving forward, the board's mission and vision, making sure that we're in alignment. I think that that's the piece that's very important. The other piece, I really appreciate that people are staying the course. Because of the complexity and the largeness of our district, that stability in those areas for a period of time is really helpful, because this work is not simple, and so to have people who are well-written and understanding, you can really move a little bit differently, I would offer, than if you're starting over often. So I put that out there as well. I think that there's a lot of evidence to support that stability in an organization when board is, you know, serving in the same areas and giving us feedback in the same areas, just to move it forward.
I would also add that I, as a person who's still kind of new, I've gotten to know our administrators a lot better in those committee meetings, and I learned a lot in those committee meetings as well. It's been really, really helpful to me, so...
Well, and there is the option of participating remotely, if necessary, because I know with working, there were times that I would participate remotely, just, but it's still good to have that conversation before the meetings.
All right, next is our roll call. Sandy?
Becker?
Here.
Dorff?
Here.
Maloney?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Sitnikow?
Here.
Wagner?
Excused?
Warren?
Here.
Noah Becker?
Here.
Tran?
All right, we have six board members present tonight, one excused. I'm also joined to my, you are also joined by Dr. Michelle Langenfoe, to my left, our superintendent. At the far end of the table is Sandy Heller, our newly-elected executive to the board of, to the school board, which, as you know, she's been doing for many years and does a really good job. And then to my far right are two intercity student council members, Noah, as Sandy just said, Noah Becker and Brianna Tran. Brianna's from Preble and Noah's from West High School. Next, I would entertain a motion for approving the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
As listed?
As listed.
Yeah, thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. We have, but you wanted...
We have communication, there is no...
Yeah, there's no communications.
And then I would move to reorder the agenda so that we now entertain motion one under Business and Finance.
Second.
Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Carried six-zero.
I move that the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds, establishment of an escrow account with respect to and the defeasance of certain general obligations, school building and improvement bonds dated July 12, 2017, as presented, be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is it here now? Yeah, okay, I'm supposed to be second.
Oh, did you want to go ahead and introduce it?
Thank you, I'd like to have, yeah, if you might. Appreciate that. And if you don't know, this is my partner, Dr. Baird, and last time he was here was October, and we actually did review or discuss defeasance coming for this year, and at our retreat in January, I mentioned it again. Mike will go over a few of the details that lie in front of you now with the defeasance, and hopefully a brief description that you can follow in terms of the differences between the defeasance, the refinance, and what exactly we're doing here, and something the school district has done a number of times in the past, so veteran board members should be fairly familiar, but we'll entertain any questions after that.
Okay, good evening. As John said, this is something the district has done, this will be the fifth consecutive year the district has done a defeasance, and what's made that doable is the fact that the district's underlying tax rate has been flat or declining, allowing you to levy some additional funds to pre-fund future debt payments, and versus a refunding where you're replacing one debt issue with another issue, hopefully at a lower interest rate. Here, you're just accumulating funds for future payments. So in both cases, though, it'll generate savings. And the one that's before you tonight, if you look under the savings from the defeasance, it's kind of in the lower right-hand corner, you'll see the amount of $905,000. So what will happen is the dollars that you're transferring with the resolution tonight will be deposited into an escrow account. That escrow account will pay off the designated principal payments that are assigned as part of the resolution. In this case, we're looking at the year 2037. If you look at the before resolution, you'll see that the principal amount, payment, scheduled payment is $4,670,000. If you move to the right, you'll see that that amount drops to $3,030,000. So the district's obligation in that year is reduced from 4.6 to the $3 million number, because the escrow account is legally responsible for that remaining principal payment. So it will happen on April 1/26, the escrow account will call that principal that you're identifying tonight in the resolution, and pay that off, and essentially save 12 years of interest. That's where the interest savings comes from, is that that is paid off 12 years earlier than it was scheduled. And I just did a quick calculation. With all the defeasance the district's had over the last several years, the total savings, and again, savings for taxpayers, this is not dollars you can reallocate for any other use, is over $2.4 million in interest savings, so... If the district, again, defeasance, just to kind of explain the process, when your debt is issued, the district has the ability to pre-fund its future debt payments in any amount it chooses. Theoretically, you could levy for all your future debt payments in one year. That doesn't happen very often, but it's an annual decision. It does not obligate the district to continue to levy at that level. It really comes in through conversations with the district and what's happening with its overall levy. But again, this will be the fifth year of the district, and the savings are substantial over time.
All right, Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Carried six-zero.
Thank you.
Seeing you. Thanks for the agenda. Trust me.
Thank you, Meg. Good work. $1,000,000, that's good.
All right, so next, we'll go back to our agenda, item number 10, monitoring reports. That's facilitated by Laura McCoy.
Hey, I think we're going to hear from John Magus on this.
Just wanted to provide an update on our thoughts on monitoring reports coming up tonight. We have an extensive report on school safety and security provided by Vicky Byer, and we have our list of upcoming reports that we wanted to discuss as well, how that relates. So we were originally scheduled for an update on our academic MLSS progress at this point, and the way that the data comes out related to academic MLSS, when we put together this as a spring report, we weren't necessarily thinking of when the data would be as fresh as possible. We don't have a report on our STAR report and how our students are doing until the end of the year, so we're finding that it would be far more productive to take a deep dive into our academic MLSS and behavioral systems, and we're suggesting that we do a full board retreat on that, so that we can look at the scope of the year rather than a point that would have been measured in January. So that's our proposal at this time. If you want to look at the list of reports and what we've covered... and what we've covered thus far, we had school success planning parts one and two in December and January. In March, we had equity. And, um, March 12th, we, second, second report was on turbocharge. Again, we're having an update on safety and security and suggesting that we're moving the, the, uh, the MLSS to combine with behavior for a summer retreat so that we can go in greater depth to show the progress made during the year and how we're doing in those areas. Next month, we have English learners focusing on our, our programmatic changes there. I think that will be a very interesting opportunity to learn more. Personalized Pathways was in June, but I'm suggesting we move it to July. And then, as we reported previously, further updates on international baccalaureate, advanced placement has been scheduled for August. So those are our suggestions for progress monitoring. And I would also entertain any, any comments or questions related to that plan. Uh, but, but my proposal is that we go into a deeper retreat where we can look at how academic and behavioral MS, MLSS are tied together and how progress has been made in those two areas at the end of the year. So, if there are no questions or comments at this time, this would allow for other, other opportunity for extensive dialogue as well during the sessions that, that we've outlined. But I do have other information on, on a couple of other areas I wanted to add here as well. Uh, we have a, and some extensive updates on trimester board policies. We've done changes in, Melissa, you might be able to correct me, 26, 24?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three different policies that we've changed because all of our policies that say semester, we've had to change to trimester. So that's been a pretty comprehensive effort by our department in the past, past weeks. We also would be more than interested in, in providing more information in May on our sixth and seventh grade advanced placement for math students. That would be something that we'd be glad to take input on. We provided an update to the board in written form a few weeks ago, but if there are additional questions, we'd, we'd love to be able to answer those in greater depth with the board report.
Would that be the math agenda item on, in teaching and learning, are you thinking?
We could, we could provide it as part of the superintendent's update as a, as a broader report at that point, or we could do something under teaching and learning as far as a report at that point.
Yeah, I think there are board members that would like to?
Sure.
That would like to have that as an agenda item.
I, I, I agree. When I was looking back at the questions, the questions were, were stated earlier and, and addressed with the, the written commentary. So I want to make sure that if there are additional questions, that we're able to have those questions so we can dig deep and provide every, every answer to every question that's there.
So, would you be able to, um, maybe just as a reminder to all of us, so it's not down in the bottom of our email list?
Sure.
Send us that, those questions and answers again?
I'd be glad to. And then I would also provide the written report that we provided too, so that you'll know what we've answered thus far.
Sure, yeah.
But I do think it would be important for us to present publicly into the board on our preparations for how we meet the, the needs of all students, particularly in this case, our advanced learners. Also, the questions related to what is, what does it look like as far as the students coming out of our Bridges Math Pilot and how they're moving into their sixth grade learning and what that will look like as, as our sixth and seventh grade teachers begin to gear up for the higher level of, of progress that our math students are making as they move into sixth and seventh grade.
So if you send us that and then board members can just reply to you with any other questions that they might want?
Yes.
Answered, and then we'll have a full discussion, I guess either May 7th or the 21st, depending on timing.
Depends on the board.
Yeah. I guess I, I'd let you decide on the timing. If you're ready by the 7th?
Sure.
Just put it on teaching and learning. If you wanna, you know, if you need more time, then just put it on the superintendent's report. Or you could, or technically, you could, I guess it's not really a monitoring report item, but?
Sure. I want to make sure they're, they're answered in a timely fashion. So I'll confer with teaching and learning and have them as, ready as, as soon as possible. But again, when I share the report back, I'm, I'm very interested in what additional questions individuals have so that I can put together a very comprehensive report and answer any, any questions that need to be answered.
Yeah, since we're going a little bit beyond strictly speaking about the monitoring reports and going into teaching and learning, one of the things that has occurred to me and perhaps others as well is the, the data dashboard and all the work that's gone into it and the availability of, of all the, the fine data that are in there. And, you know, I would suggest that whether it be part of a monitoring report or something as a regular part of teaching and learning, to have a brief item pulling something from the data dashboard on a, on a regular basis for the meetings. And, you know, I would leave it to administration's discretion what that might be, but that's being populated constantly, ongoing. And to, to bring that to the board meetings, work sessions, board meetings on a regular basis, I think would be real helpful for everybody.
I think that would be extremely valuable. We talk about making sure that we have vertical alignment and accountability from what happens in, in the classroom to what happens within each individual school, within our department supports. And then if we're bringing it here to the board, we can make sure that the goals that the board sets through, through our strategic planning are really closely monitored through, through the WISE Dash system.
You know, looking at the topics that we've had and, and considering the topics that we're, we're gonna look at in the future, I, I would think that, you know, taking any of those topics, we should be able to tie that to something that we can see on the data dashboard.
Certainly, certainly. And as well, if there are certain areas that the board would like to monitor, we can create additional opportunities within the data dashboard for us to be able to monitor as certain areas, as we want to flesh things out. For instance, our report is on English learners. We have certain aspects within WISE Dash, but if we wanted to be, be able to provide additional data or additional reports through WISE Dash, that could be something that we could work on and make sure that the, the board had up-to-date timely information on each of those areas.
And then I would think that, uh, if there are other items or topics that the board members would like to see in monitoring reports, we have an empty slate starting in September. So although a lot, some of these cycle back every year or so. But if there are specific things that, that you would like to have a monitoring report on, just let me know and we can add it to the list.
Certainly. This list has been put together based primarily on input from the board as well as, as time goes by, if we have a particular department area that we've, we've had significant focus or growth or something new that we're doing, we've had that as part of a progress monitoring report. But this is really serving for your purpose in allowing you to monitor the progress in the areas that you'd like to monitor.
Oh, go ahead.
A, a quick follow-up. We, it's interesting, Mr. Dorf, I really appreciate that you brought the data dashboard up. We've had some really important conversations sent, and today, actually this morning about that. I'm wondering if it would be helpful, I don't know if there's anything posted or, or any kind of place. So yesterday I was going on a, I'm going on We Can and I was trying to remember. It isn't something I go in every day. Do we have a tutorial or a place where you can go and understand again, we did it once at a meeting, but if you're not in it every day, to just have a place where people could go look and say, oh yeah, that's in there, oh yeah, or here I, how I get there. And maybe everybody knows and I, it's just me. But I don't go in there every day.
Like a table of contents sort of idea?
Yeah, yeah. Something where it says, you know, I mean, and, and again, I don't go in there every day, but I do then when I wanna go in, I'll grab Gwen or I'll grab Stephen and say, help me out here, remind me how to get back in. And, and I wanna look at this, show me, you know, kind of thing. Or Diane, I grab somebody. So I'm just wondering if there could be something even posted if somebody like me or others might even have that same.
Brief online tutorial.
Just a brief online tutorial that says, go here, you know, and you don't have to text Sandy on Sunday and say, Sandy, I can't remember how to do this. And it's, cause it's something we don't use every day. It's different for those who are on infant campus in the data dashboard every day. I think that would be helpful. So I'm looking at the team and I'm looking at Ms. Dersch and she's saying, she's writing it down. Alright, thanks. That would be helpful for me. And if we could make it available to others, I think that would be good. And then, then is there a place then, so I'm in there and I'm looking and I see something. And to your point, John, if a board member, we, is there a place if I, I wanna know more about something and I can't find it and I'm looking for an additional data set, could there be a place to, should they just email? Who should they ask? The board members ask, or me or anybody if they have, you know what I mean?
I think we can discuss what would be a, a good mechanism for it.
Let's get that and have that all clear.
Diane is gonna be actually serving soon as, as the state, I'm not sure of the exact title, but the coordinator or director of, of the work related to WISE Dash. So I think that it will allow us an opportunity to not only be well represented, but to guide the work of what the framework of WISE Dash looks like, not only for our district, but also things that would help us, would likely help other members as well. So I think it'll be a good opportunity for us to make sure that we're focusing deeply on a regular basis on the areas that you hope to monitor and hold us accountable on and making sure that we're, we're showing progress with our students.
What did you just say about Diane Dorf? She's going to be what?
I'm not sure of the exact title, but she's going to be Zar of WISE Dash.
Currently president-elect of the local consortium. Next year, well, starting July first, she'll be the president. It's a one-year term.
Wonderful.
So that allows us to, to make sure that, that the needs of the whole state are focused on through WISE Dash. But as a larger user, what we need is quite, quite likely what others need as well. So thank you.
That's great.
Any more questions?
Thanks, John.
Done?
I think we're done.
Okay. Um, next is superintendent's update. I'll turn that over to Dr. Langenfoe.
Thank you. Um, we have a very robust calendar coming up, beginning on April 25th, which is this Wednesday evening, is another district-wide boundary task force meeting. And I want to invite anybody who would like to attend that meeting to, you're welcome to come and listen. And at the end, you can certainly offer comments. And of course, you can go on our website and understand all the work that the district boundary committee has been engaging in. All the documents are posted as well. But again, the work is to really identify district-wide areas of need and, and strengths in terms of students and where they're, where they're, our schools. So I would encourage folks to make sure that they get engaged in the process if it's important and something of interest. And I know that the board would appreciate as much community engagement and involvement in that process. So they have a very dynamic set of recommendations coming forward. And I'm confident that will occur. April 30th, we have our community forum that was postponed on safety and security, and that's at 6 o'clock at West High School. And May 2nd is the student art reception here at the district office, where students, each school sends one piece of art and the art teacher and the student and their families are here to see it in the gallery. They do a gallery walk. And again, the beautiful art that lines our, our rooms here and throughout the office is all student art from our very own students in our schools. May 7th through 11th is staff appreciation week. May 7th is a special board meeting at 5:30 in here in room 3.
Door? That's supposed to be 5:15.
Excuse me, that would, okay. Thank you, Sandy. 5:15. And of course, then the teaching and learning work session would be following immediately at 5:30 with the organizational support works, work session following that. So 5:15 is the first meeting, a special board meeting here on May 7th. May 9th is the Cooperative Education Service Agency Annual Convention at 6:30 at CESUS 7 at 595 Bayton Road. All of this is posted. The district-wide boundary task force will meet, be meeting again on May 16th at 6 o'clock in the district office building, their regular time here in the boardroom. May 21st is the regular board meeting at 5:30. May 23rd, we honor our retirees at the retirement recognition ceremony at 5 o'clock with the dinner to follow at the Riverside Ballroom. The intercity student council meeting with the board is the next morning at, on May 24th at 7:00 AM in the boardroom. May 28th, we honor our, our veterans and it's Memorial Day. The district building is closed. May 31st is the Monocahill graduation at 6 o'clock at East High School. June 3rd, we have three graduation celebrations, beginning with Southwest at noon, West High School at 3:30, and East High School at 7 o'clock, all held at the Cressy Vent Center on UWGB campus. And then June 6th is the Preble High School graduation at 7 o'clock at The Rush. And at June 7th is the John Dewey Academy of Learning graduation at 5 o'clock at the John Dewey School, 1420 Harvey Street here in Green Bay. So all of this is posted online. And again, anyone who has questions, certainly send them our way. There is a community place where you can ask questions and get forwarded for answers.
Question?
Yeah.
Will you be giving us our assignment soon? Okay.
Tomorrow? Tomorrow, I think.
For graduations?
Okay.
So at this time, that, that concludes the calendar. And the next piece I have on my update is a safety and security update. It's actually part one, and I'm gonna invite Vicky Byer and her team up to the table. As we thought about all of the work that's been done in the district, we thought it was important to have that conversation with the board so that when all the data are gathered across the district from the various engagement sessions and various surveys that have been taken, the board has not only a picture of what is currently in place, but then can also make very informed decisions as to how to best move forward and what the governance pieces you would like to see for us to continue to improve the, the work that has been done over these many years. So I'm gonna turn it over to you and?
Good evening, everyone. I'm joined at the table this evening by the executive director of Student Services, Claudia Hendrickson, our district coordinator for safety and security, Chris Coller, and district legal counsel, Melissa Thiel-Coller. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide the Board of Education with some background on the safety and security work that's happened within the district over the last forty-some years, actually going back to 77, when we first engaged with the police department to come into the schools and help support our work. The, the purpose is really... What, what drove this actually was the event at, at Parkland, Florida back on February 14th. And as we read through some of the past board presentations on safety and security, unfortunately, the driver for all of them was a major event, going back to Columbine, when the district first initiated and established the security guidelines. Then again, I believe it was in 2003 or '06, Mr. Dorf, when the East Event, 2006, I believe?
2006.
Uh, when Mrs. Dorf and Mr. Wagner went through the, the work that they'd done in the past and provided the Board of Education with some recommendations. And here we are again, 2018. There were some holes in there as well that we'll talk a little bit about tonight. This is a high-level presentation. We did provide a lot of the detail along with links in the actual board report. And I'd welcome questions tonight or at any point, even to the members of the community. Some have already been reaching out, asking for more information, and we're glad to share. So the, the event at Parkland was a driver. In addition, the passage of Wisconsin Act 143, which Ms. Thiel-Coller will talk about in a little while. Again, high level. We'll be getting into more detail in that one over the next couple of weeks. And then the governor's announcement of the Competitive School Safety Grant, $100 million. We're still learning more details about that, but we have submitted a letter of intent asking for $10 million to support some of our work moving forward. More to come with that as well. So tonight's really about background. We'll start off with some basic information about Wisconsin Act 143.
Thank you, Vicky. And I saw today from WSB that the Office of School Safety is going to, the new office formed by the governor will be announcing details of the grant tomorrow afternoon. So those details will be coming out tomorrow afternoon. You may be familiar with Wisconsin Act 143 because it is largely reported in the media. This is the act that provides the grant dollars that we are all competing for from the state for safety and security measures. But with the grant dollars came a number of additional requirements for school districts for providing safety and security to students. I am working with Vicky, Claudia, and Chris on operationalizing what that's gonna look like in Green Bay. And we've begun that work, but tonight we just wanted to provide a high-level overage of what that will look like. And we'll come back with more information as well as to how we'll operationalize that. We're also required to provide a number of pieces of information to the Office of School Safety, including dates of last trainings. There will be, if, Vicky, if you want to go to the next slide, there'll be requirements of having a school safety plan for each school building. And that will need to be tailored to those school buildings. And any unique characteristics of those school buildings will need to be included in those school safety plans. We do have school safety plans in all of our buildings. We're just going to need to go and review those. In addition, we're going to need to do assessments of our buildings in collaboration with local law enforcement. WASB is looking into the language because it says in collaboration, so that might not mean that the law enforcement needs to be on-site as you're doing those assessments. It just needs to be done in collaboration. So we have a good relationship with our police department and fire department, and we'll look and see what that's going to look like on our end with 42 school buildings. We'll need to do school violence drills, which we're already doing. And then the building-level administrator will need to do an assessment of what those school violence drills, how that worked for those buildings. We'll also need to record our school safety training for our staff members. And by recording, I mean how many attended and what the date of that was. The biggest change, I think, for us will be similar to our CPS, our Child Protective Services, mandatory reporting for our staff, that training. We now have to have mandatory reporting of school violence threats. And there'll be training that needs to go along with that. So we're waiting to hear from the state what the frequency of that will be and how that will look for our staff and what the recording of that training will look like for our staff.
And we'll be meeting, I think it's even later this week, to start really diving into the specifics of this and share with the board as we learn more. Thank you, Melissa.
Yep.
So as I mentioned, this is a part one of two parts of presentation to the board. Tonight, we're going to focus on four different areas. First, an overview of our current reality. Then Chris will provide us with an update on implementation of past recommendations. We'll talk about research findings from FEMA, Secret Service, I believe DOJ is a part of that. And then next steps. What's the next presentation we're bringing to you?
So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about our current reality. And as many of you know, and as Vicky just mentioned, we've had a district school security plan in place since the early 2000s in response to the Columbine shooting. And then it was revamped in 2006 by Barbara Dorf and Al Banky in response to the incident that occurred at East High School. In 2016, we added Chris Coller to the team, and he was hired as our safety and security coordinator. And then Chris, Vicky, and I now meet regularly. It's supposed to be once a month, but it's been a lot more than that recently, to ensure that we're all on the same page and we know everybody's role and we're collaborating. That we also have had a relationship with the Green Bay Police Department since 1977, as Vicky stated. And the reason for that at the time was to have better relationships between youth and the police officers. And when we reviewed what we really want from the SROs, School Resource Officers, we think that that is still the main goal of the police officers, the resource officers in the building, so that the children, the students, young adults are not fearful of the police, but that they look to them for support and assistance in times of crisis. We have monthly meetings currently with the police department and police department administration, as well as our district administration, so that we can fine-tune what's going on, try to keep up with the changes in technology and media, and all be on the same page. I have attended, and Vicky did attend, their roll calls. They've reduced the number of roll calls that they have in the morning, the SROs, to once a month. And Chris and I are going to start attending those together with Vicky in her new role. And we currently have 11 SROs. And the police chief is very, very committed to having the best and the brightest and a really tight-oiled machine working here for our district, so that we get the best money we can for our dollars. And so he's really doing an in-depth review of the SRO role and what they can do to support us more from the police department side and how we can support them more on our side. We've had school board policy around safety and security. Currently had, recently had a number of them updated by Barbara Dorf right before she retired. With the enactment of Wisconsin Act 143, we are looking to have revisions or new policies updated in the handbook in either late June, early July. We have professional, we have numerous personnel that are dedicated to the prevention, training, and safety of all our students and staff and family members and community in the district. That is going to be, we'll have more to come on that in part two of our presentation at a further date. But just know that we are recognizing the increased need for social workers, counselors, psychologists, all the people that are going to help prevent some of these acts from recurring, violent acts from occurring. We have numerous opportunities for professional development, all the way from tier-one interventions, so that would be classroom management, to nonviolent crisis intervention, how do you de-escalate a situation? And if you can't de-escalate the situation, how do you keep yourself and others safe? We're also looking at really doing a lot around equity and understanding implicit and explicit biases, so that staff and students are on the same page and caring about one another in a meaningful relationships, as well as teaching staff about significant trauma and how that affects the students in the classroom and how their response to the students' behavior who have endured significant trauma can be either positive or negative. Finally, we have got district committees. We have two district committees that, again, were started by our, Chris and I's predecessors. One, well, actually, one of them was, but the other district and health and safety committee, it was, they've had one in the district, but we've made that more of a focus about trips, slips, and falls. We deal with a lot of how do we keep our staffs, staffs safe? That involves the nonviolent crisis intervention training. The team goes out to look at different buildings and assess possible areas that might be of concern. We review the compensation claims that month to determine what the needs of individual buildings are in relationship to those claims and how we can reduce those claims moving forward. The second committee, which is the District School and Security Committee, has two parts. And one involves a large group, which is, includes the fire department, the police department, the sheriff's department, the emergency management systems. And we met with them so that we are all on the same page, so that if an incident were to occur, we all know who the main contacts are and who to expect to be in charge and who trumps who in that whole situation. Which then got us to be on some other committees that are in the district that Chris and I recently went to for Brown County Safety and Security and Emergency Management, which came into play when they had to evacuate that nursing home recently in Schwabanon. So I was like, hey, I know those people. And then we have the districts, the district level, the district level, just our own staff members. And we look at protocols for school crises, as well as ensuring that our students and staff have safety drills and that we have all the rally spots. We know what we're going to do at the reunification sites. Lots more to come on that, just the very beginning of that. So we have a lot that we're working on and are currently, and a lot more work to do.
So my part of this is just kind of covering some recommendations that have been done in the past. In 2007, there was a report brought to the board by Barbara Dorf and Al Banky with some recommendations of different security things that would need to be implemented. Again, in 2013, I'm not going to go through the 2007, there's some repeat categories that are in the 2013 recommendations. I'm going to highlight some of those areas. One of the major ones was to implement something like Run, Hide, and Fight, which is an active-shooter type training that the district has since then contracted with the Alice Institute. And we use their program district-wide for our staff and our students. We also made changes to, in our security plan, we took the terms and we simplified them and removed some of the language to make them more understandable from a lockdown level one, two, and three. We changed it to more understandable language of secure the building for an inside threat, secure the building for an outside threat, lockdown for an active shooter, things of that nature, just to make it so that there was less confusion and more plain language understanding of what was happening. We did some other things as far as our, to make things easier. Multicolored flip charts for emergency management were changed into a two-sided sheet that has all of the information on one side. One side's completed for administrators, the other side for staff members to make it easier so that they can use them and understand what they need to do. A few other things that were implemented were secure entrances. Those are a big thing that has come up in our recent...
Survey.
What's that?
Surveys.
In our survey, but also in our recent, in the audit and for funding. And currently, when the current projects are completed, we will have secure entrances in all of our elementary schools. And that'll be done within the next couple of years while, when we have the funding. Additional cameras have been added to all of our schools. We've been, and added communication devices, radios, portable radios, cell phones, things of that nature, to all of the areas that were identified as needs. Visitor, software visitor processes, procedures, so that we know who the people are that are coming into our buildings, so that we, when they're in the building, they're easy identifiable. So the themes between 2007, 2013 were similar. In 2015, Ms. Dorf conducted a school site security audit and identifying some areas that we needed of concern related to our drills, our preparations for the year, our building access, and all the other things that you'll see listed there. There's a document attached on the bottom of that sheet that I went through and tried to provide up-to-date information as to what we've done to address those areas. And then, lastly, one of the things that, amongst the committees that I attend on a regular basis, I go up to the schools and I meet with our building staff, and I walk the buildings and do different assessments of things on a more, you know, intimate level and try to address things that I see on a daily, on a weekly, daily basis as I can.
I did include links to all of the studies that we used to establish what can we be doing better, what should we be looking for. And I don't know that there'll be any surprises in there for you. Threat assessment, and that is going to be part of the grant that's coming up. How are we ensuring that when a student sends a text that uses the word bomb, how do we ensure that it's, if it's a threat, that we're addressing it appropriately? If it isn't a threat, that we're addressing it appropriately? This would be in collaboration with the police department. We wouldn't make the threat assessment on our own, but I think this is one area that we really need to do some work on. Facility prevention efforts, that's what the research also includes, making sure that our buildings are physically secure. And we do have policy in place that helps us with that. But as Chris mentioned already, some of our entrances need some work. So over the next couple of years, we will be addressing that. Personnel prevention efforts, we've come a long way, but we still have a long way to go. Most of our districts has already been trained in trauma-sensitive schools. We've got the nonviolent crisis trainings. Those have to be ongoing. And the tier-one, tier-two, there's not a lot of trainings for tier-two out there for managing behaviors within the classrooms or in the hallways. So we're looking for opportunities there. We did have a training last Friday on tier-two. It's one of the first ones we've seen, and actually flew somebody in. I don't remember where he came from, but he was out of state. That's how rare it is to find really good tier-two intervention trainings. And then, of course, relationships, that's really what it comes down to. Everything that we read in the research said one of the best ways to ward off any violent attacks is to build strong relationships within your school. Mr. Dorf knows that very well. And the reason that was prevented was because somebody felt comfortable enough coming to, I believe it was an associate principal, Mr. Dorf. A lot of the studies that we read, same situation, somebody reported it because they heard something. Even the most recent one in Wauwatosa, a student heard what was going on and reported it right away. So what are we doing to build those relationships within our schools? That's something we continue to focus on.
The reality is all of our doors are locked.
Oh, correct.
And that's been confusing. I think Mr. Dorf actually has an article in the Wisconsin School Board Association Magazine and speaks, clarifies it. It's more controlled. So it's direct access. So they can't go into a vestibule, and then they have to go directly into the office. And then, that's an important, you know, because people have asked me, and I'm sure others, about, well, how come you don't secure them? Well, they're actually locked. It's just that it's not direct access. It's not as controlled as it could be. And I think that there's some other things going on in terms of, I think every day, Mr. Coller receives all sorts of different opportunities out there to become more controlled and addressing the environmental features from, you know, walls and coverings for glass and things like that that are out there. So I would assume that comes in part two.
Yes.
To bring those forward to the board in terms of what the research is saying behind different products. I mean, there's a lot of them out there, you know, and I'm not sure how...
And they all think they can do the best job for us. Many of them can.
Yeah. And what I appreciate, though, is that, and we had a conversation earlier today, there are a lot of people out there who want to help. It isn't just about earning money. They believe strongly in the safety and well-being of our schools. Obviously, our board mission is to ensure that we have, and the strategic roadmap talks about, safe and welcoming schools. So what does that look like?
Another thing that I didn't say in my piece was that with the security binder that we have in the plan, because we know in a crisis, you can't just remember to go run and find that red binder, we have it on ClassLink right now. There's an app right there on ClassLink, and you can download that to your cell phone. So all of our administrators have cell phones, so that they have their cell phone with them. They have easy access to the numbers that they need, the people they need, the policies, procedures. We all know that in a real crisis, you might not have that much time, but at least you know you have it there for you.
Thank you. Good reminder. And good segue into, a lead-up to the part two then. Since February 14th, we've been seeking input from a variety of groups, stakeholders. The community parents, community and parents through the community tabletop activities, which the last one is next Monday. The superintendent has engaged parents through the parent advisory committee. They've answered the same questions that were presented at the tabletop. Students through the intra-city Student Council were surveyed. Administrators and school staff, same questions. District office staff, and then the after-school program staff. And our plan is to continue to put the survey results together and present those to the board after next Monday's meeting. Thank you.
Can you explain a little bit more about the lack of accessibility of training for this, these Level Two interventions?
The Midwest doesn't have a great deal of... which the last one is next Monday. The superintendent has engaged parents through the parent advisory committee. They've answered the same questions that were presented at the tabletop. Students through the intra-city student council were surveyed, administrators and school staff, same questions, district office staff, and then the after-school program staff. And our plan is to continue to put the survey results together and present those to the board after next Monday's meeting. Thank you.
Can you explain a little bit more about the lack of accessibility of training for this, these level-two interventions?
Yes. The Midwest doesn't have a great deal of professionals that can offer those type of training at the level that we need it. I feel like Green Bay, even prior to me, has done a really good job hitting the universal, so the tier-one, the basic classroom management. But finding the right presenters with the right tools to, to train our staff, difficult to find.
You throw some, obviously, there's not, there's many descriptions that could maybe fit into a level-one, two or three, but just as a general idea, what might be some things that would fall into like broadly, like the probably tier-two area?
Check-in, check-out, yeah. That's, our standard one is check-in, check-out. So when the student arrives at school in the morning, they have one adult that they check in with, the adult measures where the student's at, what kind of supports they might need during the day. The student continues on with their day, but that's their go-to person if they need them. And then, before they leave at the end of the day, they check out with that same adult.
Okay. So that sounds like a good idea, but probably something we can pretty well take care of ourselves.
Yeah. I didn't have the luxury of sitting in the training, I'm sorry, last Friday, otherwise I could provide you with more examples, but I'd be glad to get that from the people that attended.
I have a couple of questions on the, whatever that document's called, the site's security analysis update, the Google Book.
The, from the 2015.
2015, 16, yeah. Just a couple definitions, actually. There's, item number eight refers to evacuation bags, I'm just wondering what those are.
So what an evacuation bag would be, like a kit that you could have pre-prepared that would offer supplies to the classroom, so if they needed to evacuate the classroom, they'd take it with them. Go-kits, they'd have class rosters, they could have food in them, they could have flashlights, you know, other things like that, maps, the security, the management plans, so that the staff, as they're leaving, they would have some of those tools as they quickly leave the classroom.
Okay. And then, item 23 was, talked about fire-safe areas and the fact that we don't have them in some of our buildings with second and third floors, can you just describe what that means?
I believe what she's referring to is areas of rescue, which are designated in the buildings, so if you've got special needs students, students with disabilities that can't use the stairs, because obviously, you know, fire, the elevator's not going to work, there's areas of rescue in our buildings that they would go to. And in some of the buildings, they have pre-set up where buttons are pushed, so that on the first floor, when the fire department arrives, they can identify that there's people in those areas. I don't know that all of the buildings have the pre-designated areas with the buttons in place, and that's an area that we're going to evaluate and make sure that if we don't have the electronic versions of it. We have worked with the fire department, they do come into our buildings and they do their own assessments of the areas. So if we've got them designated in advance, when they get there, they would know that if that building had students, because we share the information of, you know, potentially how many disabled students we'd have for them to check those areas and make sure that there is not anyone in that area that needs rescue assistance.
And was there, I'm just going by memory, was there something about numbering windows, too, that, and I assume that that would be partly related to this?
Correct. It's one of the things that are recommended to different buildings is they put the classroom number posted on the, on the window, so that for law enforcement, fire, if they came to a scene and they, if someone dialed 911 and said, "I'm in room 225," they'd be able to easily determine where that classroom is. So that's something that several of the buildings have. It's kind of a preference per building. It's definitely something that we're going to be looking at to see if it's something we make standard across the district. But I know that several of them, I had sent out information to the administrators on some international fire depart, international fire code, recommendations on size of lettering, depending on how far away from the building the people would be, so to make sure that they're easily visible, the proper font, to make sure that it's easily identifiable.
A number of our classrooms don't have outside access windows, though, so that's where some of the schools were having concerns about, well, I've got a group of classes that are inside by the, by the commons of the courtyard, and they wouldn't be able to be viewed from the outside, so they were looking for a common, you know, we don't want to do one thing for one group and another thing for another group. So I think that's, we were working on that.
And there's always the opposite side of that. You'll hear some people be concerned about putting the numbers in the windows, because then people know where the classroom numbers are, and they might be able to identify a classroom and target that specific classroom. So depending on what you read, there's pros and cons to all of it.
All right. Thank you very much. We look forward to part two.
So do we.
All right, next we have the scheduled board superintendent retreat. I'm hoping to look at May for that. This would be a retreat to discuss, actually, two, two items that are, that are somewhat related, but to discuss board, our own board policies that govern how we work as a board and our board norms, and then also discuss the, we had talked about putting together a more spelled-out list of expectations, outcome expectations in terms of evaluating superintendent, so that's what the board agenda, or the board retreat would be, would include. So if we look.
I may be short on dates in May.
Oh, all right.
That would be my only concern, just because of a lot going on, and I know that we will be, I'll be at a conference one Monday in May.
Which is which Monday?
The 14th.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that I have the information and everything together for you.
So we're out on Mondays in May with that, so, because we have Memorial Day, this is the fourth Monday, which doesn't mean we can't meet, it just means we have to find a different date besides Monday. So if we look at, are you gone the whole week of the 14th?
I am.
Okay, so if we look at the week of May 21st, we have the retiree banquet on Wednesday, but, and I don't know if you want to do back-to-back meetings, but Tuesday, the 22nd, or Thursday, the 24th, do either of those work?
I want to make sure that I can adequately prepare to make sure.
So does that?
Well, I'm not sure, let me look here. I'm just thinking, we've got state of the district on the 10th of May, and so that'll be that preparation, then I'll be gone that following week. I just want to make sure I align with the work that we've been doing, too, because I wanted to bring that forward, because we've been working on the district priorities and the metrics. And can we be wrapped on that part, so that, make sure that I can bring forward where we're at, and then the board can guide and say yes, no, maybe, but is that a doable date, too?
We could, we could look at the, the following week, then, after Memorial Day. I'm free, not a good week, okay?
Well, and it's graduations.
How is June looking?
Good into June, we have graduation, so let's see, the week of.
I would say the week of the 11th is where we should start.
Yeah.
Would that be, I just want to be, make sure I have what you need.
No, that makes sense.
Does June 11th work? We don't have a meeting that night, that works for me.
Works for me.
It works, 11th, Ed?
Is that, is that, is that too later? I mean, if we.
Well, just, I mean, it'll, it is what it is, so we'll do it when we do it. So it's June 11th at what time, Andrew, 5?
Sure.
Does that work, does that work for everybody else?
That works for everyone, thank you, I appreciate that.
June 11th, 5 o'clock.
Just give us time to read all that's going on in June.
All right, I'll turn the agenda back to you.
Yeah, I just, I, I do want to wrap up with a celebration, and I see Mr. Bergstrom, who was part of the celebration out there. Chapel Elementary was awarded again this year, and I can't remember how many times they have been, they received honors from the Department of Public Instruction as a school beating the odds, school of recognition. And I think it's really important to recognize when we think about Chapel. Chapel actually outpaced the state in achievement in English language arts. They significantly closed the achievement gap with 90.1% out of 100, and the state average is 64.4. And I think it truly is a reflection of a school working very, very hard. They, they are our international baccalaureate primary year school, actually was the first primary years IB school in the state of Wisconsin. So today is a celebration for them, celebrating the work of the students and their parents, of course, the teachers, extraordinary staff and teachers and school administrators, all contributing to this very wonderful honor. So Brent, do you know how many years you've received it, multiple?
I know it's last year, but I don't know.
It's two years.
Yeah?
It's true right now, but then because of the change in the assessments and there was a great, so it's been a bad.
The, the past two years, all right. Anyway, congratulations to Chapel Elementary.
I went to their, their musical last week, which was really good, delightful.
Anyway, that's my success story, and I'm turning it back to you.
All right.
Thank you.
So we have no legal update, next is intra-city student council report, I'll turn that over to Noah, right?
Yeah. So you guys are going to. It's Monday, people. So the ICSC is the intra-city student council, which meets monthly, and we discuss issues that are affecting students district-wide, and council members represent each of our high schools, each of our five high schools. So the first thing we discussed on the 8th of this month was the semester exam schedule and how were we, how we were planning on rectifying, how were we planning on changing the situation from the first semester, which did not go very well. That was the full day, where we had just full days for the semester exams, which replaced an old, the old system of the half-days spaced out. Now, this year, we couldn't, because the calendar had already run approved and stuff, we couldn't change it back to the half-days. And now with us, now with the district trying to go pretty far to avoid coming back on the 11th, we, we can't, that option is no longer viable. So instead, we had other, we had other options that kept a full instructional day, so that we'd meet the DPI requirement for minutes, but we could also space out the finals a bit better than six or seven tests getting, that some students ended up with on one day. And without, and without those shorter periods, because it was decided that the longer periods were better for students and staff. We decided on one option, which spaces it out over three days, and the periods are two minutes, two hours and 10 minutes. Forty minutes of it is a prep time prior to the exam, and then 90 minutes of the time is for the exam itself, which is to the old, which goes back to the old system where you'd have 90 minutes per period. So the exam time stayed the same.
So the prep time is for students to do the teacher?
That is, that's for students.
And prep for the exam?
And prep for the exam, yeah.
So is that instruct, instruct, I mean, is the teacher instructing during that time? Is, is the teacher doing the review with students?
I think, I think that's the intent, yeah.
Is that the idea, yeah?
I think it, I think is required to be. The, the council and all the other students, I asked about it, that are not on the councils, seem pretty happy with it, and staff are pretty, pretty excited for the changes, and they think, they think the schedule's going to be, going to work quite well for this year. It also has a universal lunch, so that's not, that's not a problem, but study halls and lunches, well, lunches can be open campus, but study halls cannot be under this schedule because we have to fit in our minutes. So study halls, you will be required to be at, be present at school.
As for school events, John Dewey Academy of Learning did their final event where the students presented their final projects, which was like, they'd been working on for the whole school year. At Preble, prom was last Saturday, April 21st, as it's been canceled on April 19th because of the weather. Preble is having a blood drive on May 31st. East had their prom on the 21st also, and Southwest is having theirs on the 28th. West is having their prom on May 12th, so they wouldn't be affected by the weather at all, which is great for them.
We hope. We hope.
My fingers crawl.
Not in May, not in May.
Yeah, hopefully not in May.
I can't see anything.
Yeah. Preble chose their next musical for next school year, it's Billy Elliot. And we would like to thank you, Dr. Lingfield, for coming to our DECA prep night, which is very, thank you. At West, the musical Leap of Faith has been rescheduled to show on April 29th, so if you guys want to see it, April 29th. West, their academic team took ninth in English. At East, their show quarry event, they named it Rhapsody in Red, went really well. They presented a Midnight, a Midsummer Night's Dream, which is a Shakespeare play, which was also successful. Southwest is having a blood drive on April 27th, so you can go to that one, too. And they had a track member place third in state, so that's pretty good. The next ICSC monthly meeting is on May 6th at Preble, and we will be meeting with the board again for our next quarterly meeting on May 24th, and that's all.
All right, Andrew?
Was there, was there any further discussion that ICSC has had about some kind of grade relief being granted if students were disadvantaged by the disorganization of the last exam schedule?
So that was brought up at the, it was kind of like thrown in there at the end of one of our last meetings. And everyone seemed pretty happy, everyone that, everyone seemed pretty happy with some sort of grade relief, although there wasn't, it wasn't on any official agenda, and it didn't get, it didn't get sufficient discussion, time for there to be any true opinion, but it seemed everyone that was asked was, they, yeah, they, they support anything available for grade relief. And there's also, anything that does currently exist is not realistically well-known by parents or students. So if there is anything, or is going to be anything, I think that should probably be communicated to the parents and students, just so that they're aware of any plans like that.
So if, if I could, Mr. Magus and Mr. Ho, could you please follow up with that and clarify and make sure that principals know and any communications out? Can I ask you, Mr. Becker, did, are they expecting grade relief? And if so, what are they thinking? Or was everyone, I, at first I thought maybe you were saying students were satisfied with their grades, so I, I wasn't sure what you meant.
No, students, um, yeah. So students, as a very large majority, were unhappy with the grades, just because, you know, taking seven tests in a day, by the end of the day, that you're not going to be as successful. So students do kind, would, would be very happy to see something like that, like if the final did significant damage to their grades, which it did for a lot of students. I know of one particular guy, he had, he had a pretty good grade, and it just, the final was being worth 15%, he got like a D on it, and it was quite damaging to the grade. And this happened with multiple, multiple people, so I think they would be happy to see some sort of grade relief if that could be arranged.
Do you want him to talk?
What, do you have anything to share that would be helpful? Please. Obviously, I'm not helpful. I didn't know he knew, come, yes, please. I think it would be important for the students to hear this, and for all of us.
It's appropriate just to walk up to the board table, so. Good evening. So a couple of things that we've done already. So number one, I'm glad to hear that you're having those discussions at your ICSC meetings, Ms. Butcher and I have worked closely. Ms. Butcher and I have worked closely with principals. And we've got a group of teachers that are working on these things as well. Things that have gone out already. And if you haven't seen these things, I'd want to know about it. Because we did share them via the email messenger system, asking parents, number one, if parents had any concerns or if students had any concerns about final exam grades, that they were to reach out to the school and let them know that they wanted to hear those things so they could help with grade remediation or those things. I do know that it has happened in a couple of situations, specifically by course, where particular courses were affected, based on the input they received from teachers. And then principals also engaged in an activity with me at a principal's meeting, where we looked at data of grade progressions over the course of the year to try to identify if there were certain courses or students where you could see a distinct grade change that happened after a final exam. So we've done those two things. If there, if you didn't receive any of the information that we shared by messenger as parents, or as students haven't seen it, I'd want to know so that I can make sure that that was reshared. Because that was sent out by all of our high school principals to their parents.
All right. I'll, I'll talk to people and see if, I just asked the, a bad group that none of them had seen it or something like that, or if a parent did communicate that properly, so.
I think there's just a lot of moving parts, so it's possible. But, but would it make sense then if, if you go back, Noah, and ask around if, if a lot of kids missed it or parents because of busy schedules, maybe it's something that could be pushed out again.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that the schools could be notified, you know.
And it would make sense. Our intention is to notify everyone again about the spring semester exam. So that would be a good thing to pair with those.
One, one concern I have about this process, I'm glad to see some, some work has happened. But going back to what I said before, and I think this probably can be considered an agenda request for May that I might end up withdrawing. But if, if I don't see that enough has happened, then I might want to have board action in May on this. My concern is that there are reasons that students and parents might not access some kind of appeal procedure other than believing that the, the test wasn't fair. There are people who don't have, don't have enough time to go through these processes. There's people who have, may or may not have the same level of access, comfort, working, working with the system, personal values about, you know, well, I guess if I got a bad grade, that I should have worked harder. I'm not going to use the system, which is a noble idea if the testing worked. But this time it didn't. Many hundreds of other times before it did. And so that's why I've always supported some, for this case where things went so wrong with the scheduling, I still think that it's better to have a system where simply your final exam grade could help you, but not hurt you. No one, no one's grade goes down as a result of that. I suppose, you know, the fact that some people might get a little bit of a, you know, some people you might be competing with for class rank might get a boost in regards to you as much less of a problem than, you know, your grade point average dropping below a scholarship or an acceptance threshold because you had to take an exam, six exams in a day. So I just want to make sure that there's something where I feel a little more comfortable that students have some relief if, if this happened to them without having to rely on their love, their comfort level navigating policy and procedure, parents' comfort levels, amount of self advocacy. I mean, self advocacy, there's, there's a place for it. But the finals, the, what happened with the finals this time, we, we screwed up. And so I just want to make sure that that's looked at. And this is not something that I mean for next year because it affects grades right, right now this, this year. So, so I look forward to some more information on that. And depending on what happens, may I want this to be a May action item.
Thanks for the input. We can take that into account. And I know that Dr. Ho and the principals have, have gathered significant data. We could probably, we, I think it might be worth reaching out to you individually to, to share some of that in greater depth, so that we know exactly where the concerns lie and can make sure that they're addressed fully. But I understand what you're saying. Perhaps a passive ability to, to, to influence the grades in a positive manner, as opposed to somebody have to take active interest in investigating on their own might be worthwhile and/or opportunity for students, if they feel that they've been wrong, to have an opportunity to, to voice that as opposed to it going to that next layer of parent as well. So we can take that under advisement and provide additional information. Thank you.
And it, it sounds like, Dr. Ho, you already pulled the data. So you would be able to see where the students across the entire district were prior to taking the finals.
Yep.
And then you could see how many went down. I mean, that would be a pretty easy thing to look at if you've already done that. So that makes sense.
And we meet again tomorrow with our secondary principals so we can talk more about this tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Becker, for bringing them. Thank you, Noah. Yeah, she's going to just go. So next is our legislative liaison report, and I'll turn that over to Laura.
There are just two items. The first one is school-based, the school-based mental health grants, which our district will be pursuing. Under the two thousand seventeen eighteen state budget, the Department of Public Instruction will make available three point two five million per year in grants to, to school districts. These will be available to public schools, private charter schools, and CISA's, and will be used to provide mental health services to students in collaboration with community health agencies, as well as for screening and intervention services. Like I said, our district will be pursuing that money.
So is that for, that would cover staff or would cover, what is it, what is it covered? Does it say?
Just to provide services, yes.
I'm wondering if, I mean, usually a grant doesn't, isn't useful if it provides staff, yeah.
That was one of the conversations we had today at the Blue Ribbon Commission, to talk about the fact that we can fund these things for a year or two. And then it's a competitive grant. So you have a child receiving services and support, and all of a sudden it's gone. And if you don't win the grant again, or the money dries up, it's, it's not a, a good system. One of the, one of the superintendents was actually asking if we can use to, and making a case for fund eighty dollars that the board could levy for mental health. So it's an interesting time, but that is one of the cautions always. It's better for, I mean, I mean, and I don't, Angela can provide greater detail. I think we can get that to the board. But recognizing that often the resources, you create the cliff, but if it's professional development and those kinds of things, or partnerships and space and to come in, it's a different outcome. But we are worried about that, bringing resources and not being able to sustain them.
And then item number two is the Blue Ribbon Task Force on School Funding, which met today in Ashgosh, wrapped up around six o'clock today. They were scheduled to hear from invited speakers, including representatives from Appleton, Nina, Lemira, Kettle Moraine School Districts, as well as CISA six. And then the public was given the, or was invited to testify and give input. Other than that, we have the, can we, Melissa, can we access that video on school funding? I saw this with, with Michelle and Katie and Brenda. At the, at the Golden Apple Awards last week. And it's just a short video about school funding. Go ahead.
The school funding formula is incredibly complex. Just like in business, schools have incoming and outgoing revenues. When facing a shortfall or launching a new product line, businesses can reduce costs, take out loans, or use other financing options. School districts must go to the voters through referendums to seek funding for future needs. However, this can be costly and risky. When business owner Hannah hires new employees at her business, it doesn't matter what community her employees come from. She wants them all to have the employability skills, critical thinking capabilities, and a foundational education. However, not all school districts have the resources needed to ensure every student is successful. This is because Wisconsin's school funding formula is outdated and broken. The school funding formula works like this. Every school has a bucket in which they collect revenues. However, each bucket is a different size depending on how much revenue they collected in nineteen ninety-three due to state revenue caps. Categorical aids are a flat rate for a specific purpose. General aids are used to equalize the disparities between high and low property value districts. In addition to state aids, federal and other miscellaneous aids are added to the mix. The rest of a school's revenue bucket is made up of local property tax dollars. As you can see, school districts who are capped at a higher rate of revenue can invest in new technologies or programming to better equip students for whatever career, post-secondary education, or other challenges they may face in the future. Schools with lower revenue caps have a greater challenge addressing unforeseen mandatory expenditures. Employers are already noticing disparities in their employees. How long do we wait before we take action to fix the state school funding formula? Let your concerns be known by taking action and getting involved.
And that was produced by Partners in Ed, right?
Yep, Partners in Ed.
What's the timeline on, on meeting, the commission meeting and coming up with the new funding mechanism? What's the timeline on that?
That's a good question. Our, is my understanding, based on, on the work that's been done, we should be completing the hearings at the end of May and around the, around the state. Then the next piece of that is bringing in information regarding what other school districts and, or states are doing across the nation in terms of, are they, are they bringing in weighted kinds of aids and categorical aids? I think one of the, so this summer yet, so that when they go into the next, the next biennium, they have the recommendations. One of the pieces that I think we met with Representative Kitchens and Senator Olson again today, actually, business community and members of Partners in Ed actually met to talk about how the business community can provide support and background to legislators because they're going to have to make some important decisions. And right now, the funding formula is set up for taxes and not necessarily for students. It's not, it's not student-focused, so to speak. It's not on what students need. It's making sure that the taxpayer has, has a funding stream. And I don't know if, John, if I'm saying that as well as I could, or as eloquently as I could. It's okay. But, but really, that's what it is. So there's tax relief within the school funding formula. And the reality is, if you listen to school districts across the state, there is an extraordinary amount of resource needed. For example, and you talked about mental health. We're seeing more and more children presenting mental health concerns much earlier than we ever have. And then we have teachers who are trying to address the children's needs in the mainstream and may not have the resources. So we need to add additional staff to support those children. And so that's one of the big areas. Another area is when a student is identified as special education. Again, more and more students falling into that category with significant needs. And again, more staffing needed to support the children. And we're hearing that all over. There was a very small school district today who testified. And they pay, what do they say? There is, there is significant thousands of dollars of difference between their average regular student and the student who receives services. So significant, I think it's like seven thousand dollars. I'd have to go back and look, the difference between the cost of a regular ed student and a student receiving services. And they pay out of the general revenue sixty-three percent of that difference. We pay a significant amount of our general revenues budget for that as well. So a lot of what we're hearing are those two areas that are very, very concerning. Is it a question of the formula? Or is it a question of students' needs not being addressed in the formula, not driving to, to address student needs? I think the other piece that keeps coming up is the impact of competition around making sure that we have the best teachers in front of one another. And one school district got up today and said, well, we have our starting teachers paid at forty-two thousand five hundred. Another district is paying theirs at thirty-nine thousand dollars because that's what they can afford. And the resources simply aren't there to compete. And I think that that's something that, the educational landscape, because of the change of how it's being set up right now, and pitted against one another is really something to really attend to. Because we do have a teacher shortage. We have fewer and fewer people entering the profession because it's not necessarily recognized for what it is, which is probably one of the, if the not most important profession that people could go into because they support the future. And so, you know, and the other piece that's really coming out is, is that we need to be educating children for their future. And that means technology. That means being able to have modern educational settings so that they can work collaboratively and so on. So those are kind of the three big areas that keep coming to light. And it doesn't matter where a student lives in the state of Wisconsin, so. And the rurals are really experiencing a lot of concern as well with, with declining enrollments. Because it's a catch-22. When the business community, when the business community is not robust in bringing people in for jobs, then there's no money to pass a referendum for schools. And so pretty soon, nobody's living in parts of rural Wisconsin, which is very troubling as well.
I think Sandy had the lead.
Yeah, yep, and Jean, who's on, which is, and Vicky's there, so we're good? Okay. All right.
Is that it?
Yes, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. District events, anything have, events to, and now it's coming up. All right. Next, we'll move to our system reports. First is teaching and learning. That'll be facilitated by Ed Dorff.
Thank you. Just a couple of items quickly here. First, I'll move that the International Baccalaureate Middle Years Program Authorization Plan and Resources and expenditures associated with this plan as presented be approved.
And we talked about this.
In a second.
In a second, yes. There's a moment.
In a, in a second, right. We talked about this.
Unless there's any public comment on it.
All right, we'll bring it to a fold. Ellen?
Aye. Dorff?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sidney Carr?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
Okay, then, this one wasn't on our, we didn't meet, we didn't talk about this one when we met last week, I don't think. But repeal of admission of persons over age twenty policy, four twenty-six.
Here comes Melissa. We're wondering if this new.
Can you speak to this?
Can you speak to this policy we're repealing that we haven't had a conversation about yet?
It was the cleanup, I think.
This policy was included in the admission of student policy. The, this language is included in that, so it's, it's duplicative. So we're just repealing a policy, the language of this policy, where the language is already included in the admission of students policy that you had revised, I believe. Was that March, Ellen, where we revised that policy?
Yes, I believe it was March.
So will the repeal of this pol, I mean, repealing this is not saying that what this policy said is gone?
No, that this, this language was incorporated, and a more extensive language was incorporated in the. in the, the admission of student policy that you adopted in March.
Okay, so we will still be able to admit students over the age of 20 with?
Correct.
Given due consideration.
Yep, it was already in that policy, and the language was more explicit and provided more, more details.
Okay. Then I move that the admission of persons over the age of 20 policy 426 be repealed.
Second. Sandy, Ellen, sorry.
Sidney Coe?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
And that concludes teaching and learning.
All right, next we have organizational support, that'll be facilitated by Andrew Becker.
All right, thank you.
This'll be a little longer than teaching and learning, I suspect.
Yes. Okay, so number, number one, we took out of order earlier in the meeting.
Yeah.
I move that technology resource advisors be awarded the bid for replacement of the current teacher workstation devices at a cost of $2,193,333 as presented.
Second. If you have questions, we've got Diane here. We received the report that Sharon Howell came to this result.
Hi there, good to see you this evening. We just wanted to summarize for you how we came to this result. I'm Diane Dersch, Chief Technology and Information Officer, and we have John Otto, Director of Technology here. We want to summarize just briefly that these desktops that teachers had, have on their desks are up to eight years old, and so we knew that we needed to replace them. We received input from close to 450 teachers, that was through a Google form with some video that they watched, and also invitations to a personal preview of different configurations. After that, we took a look at warranty criteria. We knew that with damaged laptops that we needed a quick repair system. And so we looked for companies who could provide us with a quick turnaround on repairs, as well as pick devices up out at the schools. And we wanted to make sure that these companies with warranty repairs also worked with the school district our size. After that, we, we took companies, we put a request for proposals out, and we received the proposals that you see in your board report. And we are asking for recommendation, or we are recommending the purchase then, for two different types of laptops for teachers. A general teacher laptop, which will take place eventually of the teacher desktop that is on the teacher's desk, as well as a higher model that has a faster processor and different graphics, because our project Lead the Way teachers need a faster processor and have more complicated applications to run. So the proposal that you see before you is to request that we get authorization to purchase the devices that are in your board report. Anything else, John, that you would like to add?
Well, we did, this is an example of the device that we're looking at. It's a, we call it two-in-one device, so allows you to go to regular laptop mode or a tablet mode. And it also has, has the feature of allowing, of allowing a touchscreen. So, you know, so a teacher can, can use it in the classroom, walk around the classroom, has ways of projecting up at a screen even when they're walking around. It's, we hear from teaching and learning and also from the teachers that this sort of flexibility will, will have an impact on their ability, on the way they can teach rather than being tied to the front of the classroom.
And then the goal is to, to, as soon as we can get this approved, so that we can get them in the hands of teachers so they can take them home for the summer.
Yes, if possible, what we will do is pair the deployment of the device with training. So nobody gets a device unless they've been through training on how to use this. Things like a docking station might be new for people, how to use a stylus. What Miracast is, the fact that you can wirelessly broadcast to your projector then, and you don't have to be tethered. And, and then also the Microsoft Ink, which is what John showed you, where you can write on, on your screen and take a screenshot. So those are all new things that are going to be new to the teaching practice and new tools for our teachers to learn. So if we can get them, the sooner we can get them into the hands of our teachers, the more comfortable they will be for next year. I also do want to say that we are not taking the workstations that are currently on the teacher's desks, we, we will not take those away right away, so that a teacher can have a gradual release and get used to using that portable device as well.
So that was a question I had was, the, it says you've discussed the move to a new teacher workstation for the 2019-20 school year, so, so the new workstation will include that and other things, or?
It would include.
You're just meaning the new workstation would be the removal of the old desktop?
Right, right, right. Yes, because of security reasons and the operating system that we're running on the desktops, they will no longer be truly secure and functional after the end of next year.
After next year, okay, all right. So they will actually have their new workstations 2018, 19?
Yes, they will.
Yeah, okay.
So there's an overlap there.
Right.
And, and we talked about if the teacher is absent and what would happen, because we're used to those desktops sitting there for a substitute teacher. So they have a plan for the subs, but, but at the same time, to have that transition and understand how many are used and because they need those for attendance and.
Right, and, and so substitute teacher, guest teacher training is going to change in that we will include training on this device as well. But Dr. Langerfeld is very right, if a substitute teacher is not comfortable with this, they'll still have that desktop for a year that they can work with, and that is something that they're familiar with up to this point.
Okay. Andrew?
So are you expecting that teachers will, as your earlier adopters, if you will, will start using the, will put their keyboard and mouse connected to the docking station?
The idea is that they would have the option of, of having this in their classroom. In fact, they could even keep it closed and plug it into the, they plug it in one plug, goes into here, and this, this would, this is a docking station. And this would allow them to have their projector, keyboard, mouse, everything, so they could use it very much like they are currently with their current desktop, as well as being able to take it with them or take it around the school, take it to meetings, et cetera. So it'd give them a flexibility to do that.
So you may have, you may have some, I guess, I was talking to Noah about this earlier today, and some of these workstations are just, current workstations are just two gigs?
That's correct.
So even if, I guess at first I was talking about the early adopters, but now, even if you're not that, even if you never open, even if you never open it for the first year, you're much better off to have it with the docking station and just have that be the brain and still use the full-size keyboard.
That's, that's very correct. And another thing about our selection process, we set about a dozen of these out into the schools at all three levels and had teachers try these for a month. So I expect that we're going to have some, some people who, we had to take it out of their hands in order for us to, you know, at the end of the month. I expect they'll be very early adopters.
So, but why only the, why not all the docking stations then?
Because there's a disparity between the number of teachers we have and the number of classrooms we have.
Okay, because the docking station stays.
We have interventionists, we have tech integrators, we have counselors. They're certified teachers, but they do not have a workstation in a classroom.
So every classroom will get a docking station?
Yes, but we do know, again, that not everyone may want this right away, and so we will when teachers are ready for it.
Except I don't, I don't know if I agree with that, because I think although you might not want to use, you might not want to be walking around with it as a tablet, the computing power everybody does want right away. I mean, there's, even if you're, even if you're scared of breaking it or something, which is reasonable, you, you are at a serious disadvantage with your workstation with, without this.
You know, I couldn't agree with you more. The teacher would be at a disadvantage, but I've also learned a long time ago that you're much better off is if the teacher returns to school with the device that they left with. If during the school year we replace it, they're really happy. If they show up the first day of school and something strange is in front of them, they're not quite so happy.
Oh, sure, I guess I'm just not seeing the, I'm not seeing an advantage of not ordering all the docking stations and having docking stations everywhere.
We are ordering enough docking stations to all the classrooms.
So we are or we aren't?
We are.
1,200, yes, and John pointed out to me.
So every classroom will have a docking station?
We have 1,200 classrooms.
Okay.
Approximately, yes.
Okay, it was just, I didn't quite understand how it was worded in the.
Right.
Thing, but okay, so every classroom will get a docking station, and every teacher will have at some point the new, the new device. And I guess my, my only rollout concern would be making sure that I could see, I could see people being afraid of breakage or not being an early adopter, just making sure that they know that they can leave it on the docking station and not use any of the fancy features, and still you have a much better, faster computer.
Right.
We didn't need I7s for the leadaways?
What, what are these?
You got the I5 with more.
Right.
Yeah, I7 was, was substantially more expensive.
It was, okay.
Yes. And it is a newer I5 processor. We feel it's very adequate for what we're doing. Eight gig of RAM.
All right, any other questions?
Can I ask where the ones with slightly more, with more RAM and a little bit higher specifications, but at significant, you're ordering 50 of them, and they're at quite a bit higher cost than the other, than the other mouse, so I understand why you wouldn't want to order all 2,000 of them. But can I ask where those are going to be used versus where the, the ones with eight gigabytes of RAM are going to be used?
Sure, Project Lead the Way does require CAD programs and other things that require a faster processor, a better graphics card, and those kinds of things. And we do know that it's not just our Project Lead the Way teachers as well, they're, it's at middle school and the high school. So we took a look at how many teachers this could possibly be and went from there.
Project Lead the Way is our engineering, so they have the CAD programs and the, just the programs that require higher RAM and memory.
All right, that makes sense, thank you.
All right, anything else? Okay, Ellen?
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sidney Coe?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on that.
I move that Franco's IZ Construction be awarded the bid for general construction work at Washington Middle School in the amount of $1,944,830 as presented.
Second. Ellen?
Becker?
Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Sidney Coe?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Is that everybody? Carried six zero.
I move that, Merit?
Merit.
That mine construction be awarded the bid for general construction work of Baird Elementary School in the amount of $18,508,160 as presented.
Second. Go ahead, Ellen.
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sidney Coe?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that ML Construction be awarded the bid for general construction work at Weekly Act Elementary School in the amount of $148,828 as presented.
Second. Ellen?
Becker?
Aye.
Sidney Coe?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the 2018-19 fee schedule as presented be approved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Andrew?
So almost but not quite every year, I've talked about the graduation fee, and I've never thought we should have one. I don't, I don't like the message that it sends. I don't, I don't know how serious of, I understand that there are alternative ways that are found for kids to probably get it covered if there's a problem, but I don't like, I don't like the message that it sends, and it's not a significant amount of money, and I just thought maybe it would be good to have a little discussion about that.
What do we pay for our graduations, do you know, John?
Overall?
For renting the?
I think Mr. Ho just, um.
Do you have the budget for this?
He just booked it, yeah.
Okay.
It's a big bucket of money.
Yeah, it is.
Just for the graduations. And I know that we've had a lot of discussion on fees overall, and some significant fees not being paid, and I'm, so.
Yeah, so fees for, I think what you're referring to, Mr. Becker, is fees that kids pay to participate in the ceremony. Not necessarily school fees and unpaid.
Right.
No, I'm talking about the graduation ceremony.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Commencement, yeah.
All right, give me a second here. I did just work on this recently, so.
Well, and I think maybe I backed off of it the last couple of years because it was agreed to make it a waivable fee, so that made it less bad, so I was less concerned about it. I'm also concerned, but I think, I think it's a longer-term thing. I don't, I don't like the idea of an unwavable student parking permit fee if it's not wavable for people who take classes at multiple schools and have to drive in between, but I don't think this is the venue for, for that, that's a little more nuanced. But here, I just think there's a philosophical point to be made about the, you know, hey, 25 more bucks to walk across the state, I just don't, I just don't like the message.
What's the message that?
I think the message is that it's not, it's, you know, you've, why should you have to pay for it? You, you've done the work, you've done, you've done the work for four years, and for the, I don't know, for the off, off chance that it's even the slightest discourager of someone to, to go or to not ask for, not ask for the help or not, it just seems like a really, I would rather, I would rather raise the general fee one, one dollar or two dollars, whatever it would be, I'm not proposing that, but I would rather do that than to just say that we're getting one last, it feels like one last check from you on the way out the door, even though it's a small check.
I, I do know that principals do make those accommodations for people that come forward and can't afford, but I think your point is about, in the similar conversation we had before, there may be students or parents that don't come forward, or it's a demotivator, is that accurate?
Or you're, don't feel comfortable coming forward, or you're embarrassed to come forward, and it's, any number. If one, if one kid doesn't graduate because of something related to this fee, it's not worth it to me for the revenue we get from that, from that particular fee.
The student will graduate, it just. The student will graduate, it just-
No, I know, I know, but this is a big deal.
You just said that. You just said that. If one student doesn't graduate because of this fee, that's not going to happen.
Yep, that's my mistake.
The student's going to happen. I think to a certain degree, it's been experiential, the first time we had a chili bingo supper at House School, the first year we did it, there was no charge. People could come and eat as much as they want. The next, and we had an okay turnout. The next year, we charged one dollar per person for all you could eat chili and we filled the place. People had committed a dollar per person and that commitment had them showing up for the event. I think the same to, same thing could be applied to graduation. I think there's a certain commitment that you make to participate in the commencement.
Aren't you already with what you're spending on cap and gown and so forth?
Isn't this part of the cap and gown thing? This isn't?
No.
Oh, okay.
No. And, and as far as, you know, I, I doubt if it's changed much in, in five years, but the school counselors, the school social workers, I mean, we, we talk to kids about those that, that indicate that they, they're not going to walk. And there's not a lot of them, but you know, we, we'll talk to them about why that is. Why, why aren't you walking? Sometimes it's issues with, with family, what have you, but you know, these options are explored. That $25 is not going to stand in the way of a kid walking if they want to walk. I mean, you know, we've, we've had pots of money that can help kids with caps and gowns, pots of money that would help kids with this as well. So, you know, when, when Vicki and the team were up here before and talking about safety and security, the, the thing that they really hit on the head was the importance of relationships. And, and that is something that our, our teachers, our, our school counselors, our social workers really are adept at. And it would be, I'm not saying it couldn't happen, Andrew, but I, but I think it'd be pretty rare that there'd be a case where this would get in the way of a kid walking without somebody on the staff saying to that kid, you know, we can help you out with that.
So if someone, okay, so if, in some, somewhere the process of planning graduation, every kid who says, um, thanks but no thanks on the, on the ceremony, they're going to, someone's going to talk-
Somebody's going to check in with them.
So that might be a little bit less, um, that's more of a, so that's more of a given where I guess the issue, that could make it a little bit different than the issue about the grades where everyone who had seven exams on a day was, you either were negatively affected or, or you weren't. So I guess, um, I can't, I mean, I really, all right, I'll, I guess I'm okay with that. I, and, and in, I'll ask you, I had forgotten that we had made it a waivable fee for free and reduced, which now that I'm checking out the, the stars here, I feel a little bit better about that. So I'll, I'm, I'm good with that for, for this year, I think, although if there's others interested in amending it to, to take it out, I would support that too.
How's the, how is the waivable fee, I guess, how are they aware of it? How is it put out there? Where's, where is it sent out so that they know that it's even an option?
If you, if you, if you apply for free and, for free or reduced lunch, you, everything that's a waivable fee is just auto waived.
Okay.
With it.
So you know, yeah, you're good though.
And someone mentioned this before, but we also changed the, the policy in graduation that you can't be denied participation for the other fees that we mentioned, the, the school fees that maybe were unpaid. So we've, we've tightened that up as well.
Yeah. Okay.
And then Dr. Langenfeld, you were asking about the budget for rentals?
Yeah, I was asking, yeah, I just-
We, we budgeted $32,000 to rent the Crest and the Rush Center for graduation. I don't know the exact breakdown between the two. I know the, the rush is-
I think it's half and half.
A little more expensive for the one night-
One night, yeah.
Than the other one is for the-
For for one graduation.
For one, one graduation, yeah.
But, you know, I, I have to share, having served in a district where they didn't let everybody come, this is really nice. I mean, they're a grandparent.
We fill it up.
We filled 10,000. You know, 16,000 and 10,000. They're there.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I, I know it's, it's, it's important for families and communities.
Thanks, Tom. Uh, okay, so we have a motion on the table. Ellen? Oh, did you have something?
Yeah, you answered.
Okay. I saw his answer.
Yeah, thanks. Go ahead, yeah.
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Sidney?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dor?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that food service management policy accommodation modification, school food service program policy and rule as presented be approved.
Second. Ellen?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dor?
Aye.
Sidney?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the free and reduced price benefits in school food service programs policy and appeals of eligibility for free or reduced price benefits, policy and rules as presented be approved.
Second. Ellen?
McCoy?
Aye.
Dor?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sidney?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
Okay, that concludes the, concludes the business and finance and then organizational support. I move that the 1.0 help desk technical support position, 12 months, change in hourly rate from 1781 to 2135 per hour and associate job description be approved.
Second. Ellen?
Sidney?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Dor?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the technology acquisition technician, 12 months, at an hourly rate of 2135 per hour and associate job description as presented be approved.
Second. Ellen?
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Dor?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sidney?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
Move that the table of organization be modified to reflect the change of a 1.0 student base, database manager, 12 months salary, group 13. Change to a 1.0 enrollment specialist, 12 months salary, group 16. And that the associate job description as presented be approved.
Second. Ellen?
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dor?
Aye.
Sidney?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the table of organization be modified to reflect the change of a 1.0 land administrator, help desk coordinator, 12 months salary, group 15, to a 1.0 user directory coordinator, 12 months salary, group 16. And the associate job description as presented be approved.
Second. Ellen?
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sidney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dor?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
Move that the table of organization be modified to reflect the change of a 1.0 supervisor of student attendant engagement, 10 months salary, group 13, to a 1.0 manager of student engagement, student attendant, attendance, engagement, advocacy, 12 months salary, group 13. And that the associate job description as presented be approved.
Second. I do have a question. No, Jean's not here.
Oh, there she is.
Yes, she is.
Hiding behind you, Andrew. Actually, I don't know if, I actually have another question back to the enrollment specialist. One of the things in the job descriptions that maintains tracking of voucher students, are we now able to identify who our voucher students are? Do you know? Does anybody know?
I'm not sure.
Cause I know before we had no idea who they were, so we had no way of-
I don't know, it's, it's, I don't think it's the name, it's the-
Oh, it's just tracking the numbers.
The numbers and money associated with it.
Okay, all right. Okay, so my question is, I know this particular job description is specific to a position at Preble.
Yes, it is.
Will it, will it ever become a position we might fill at another high school?
Um, I think, I think that it probably will not.
Okay.
I think it's going to, it's a unique position to Preble, a person that's been in the job a long time. And as he's been in the job, his duty of responsibility evolved.
Right.
The one duty that he's taken on is the Preble Summer Sports Academy.
Right, yeah, that's what my question is, if it's so specific to Preble that it, yeah, but at this point you see it just staying as, as a Preble position?
That I do.
All right, thanks. That's all I had. Um, Ellen?
Becker?
Aye.
Sidney?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dor?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the transfer of Thomas Jennings Supervisor of Student Attendance Engagement, 10 months at Preble High School, to Manager of Student Attendance Engagement Attendance and Advocacy, 12 months as presented be approved.
Second. Ellen?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Sidney?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dor?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the transfer of Ellen Creer, Executive Assistant Paralegal, 12 months at the District Office Building, an hourly rate of 2775 per hour, to Student Discrimination Discipline Title IX Coordinator, 12 months at District Office, a salary of $65,007, Group 12, effective April 24th, 2018, as presented be approved.
Second. Ellen?
McCoy?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dor?
Aye.
Sidney?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried six zero. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome to the dark side.
Only dark when you turn off the lights.
I moved that the salary adjustment for Michelle Jacobson, High School Principal, 12 months at West High School, from Group 4, 90th percentile, 105, 243, to 96th percentile, 112, 259, as presented be approved.
Second.
I don't have an objection to it. Explanation?
Yeah. It's because when she was hired, she was hired at the very low end of the pay scale. And now that she's experienced, we are bringing her up. And this will provide that she's paid higher than the associate who's a 12-month and is at the top of the pay scale.
Do we have anybody else in a similar situation?
No, but we did this once before when we had a principal who came in lower and then we advanced that individual through the scale faster.
Okay, thank you.
Ellen?
McCoy?
Aye.
Dor?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sidney?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
Move that a wage increase in the hourly rate for co-op students from 850 per hour to 10 per hour, effective July 1, 2018, as presented be approved.
Second. Ellen?
Sidney?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Dor?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
Move that a wage increase in the hourly rate for interns from 850 per hour to $10 per hour, effective July 1, 2018, as presented be approved.
Second.
These are teaching interns or what?
We have interns in communications and then we have interns in IT.
Okay.
So-